Roll call attendance? Sarah?
Present.
Uh, Coleman?
Present.
Deb?
Present.
William?
Present.
Uh, Anna?
Present, I didn't realize there was an in-person option, sorry.
That's totally fine. Uh, Irv?
Present.
And Sarah Vess, I am here. I know Bridget is going to be late, she let me know. Okay. So, now that we're all here, first, I would like to say thank you all very much for coming. I hope this is super informative and we all are way smarter at the end of it. Okay. So, first, we have our FY26 Operational Budget Assessment Method Discussion, for which we have invited two representatives from DESI to help us explain better. And Dr. Z is remote and we have Shannon. Dr. Z, would you like to start?
Sure, good evening, everyone. I do apologize for not being a person, I'm not feeling the best. Whoever's controlling or the host, I need them to let in the Associate Commissioner from DESI, please. So, I don't know who's hosting the meeting, but if they could please let him in the waiting room. Megan is a slideshow on up.
Putting up now.
Now, let me know when, because I can't see anything but a blank white screen. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to start off by saying that from the time I took this appointment, it's been a learning curve and a lot of the information has come forth through implementation and through practice. One of the key things that we've been doing from early on and we're tasked with is working through the budget and making sure that we are able to have sound fiscal practices. And with that, we are where we're at today. I kind of want to walk through our current practice and then some of the key points. From there, we'll talk about what is actually best suggested practice that we've learned. And then I will hand it over to our DESI representatives, who have agreed to join us this evening. So, Megan is a PowerPoint up?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so, we should be on slide two, which is our current practice. And our current practice right now is in the months of October to December, we usually have a four towns meeting. And this is how it's kind of been happening for decades. So, there's a four towns meeting and we discuss the regional budget. We discuss what are possible assessment methods and we do this probably October to December. Then, when we're looking at March, usually in March, the Regional School Committee votes the budget and the assessment method. And then, between April to June, the four towns each have their separate fiscal meetings where they kind of agree on the budget and the assessment method. However, what you'll see on the next slide is the fact that the key point is our current practice is actually a high-risk practice. And the main concern that we have is that the process that we have in place is actually what is the norm, right? It's what we normally follow. But, if one town rejects the assessment method, then we have to start completely over. Because in our regional agreement, which establishes the region, there's already an assessment method that's in place. And what has happened, for example, last year, all four towns voted and then an assessment, a one-year amendment to our regional agreement was submitted to DESI in June. What happens is whenever we step outside of our regional agreement, we actually have to not only have the four towns agree on the assessment method, we also have to have the commissioner's approval of this before the regional committee can actually vote or is supposed to vote. And so, by law, the school committee must vote a budget by March 31st. And with any kind of alternative outside of it, outside of those combined steps of the four towns agreeing on the assessment method and the commissioner's approval, technically, the school committee cannot vote on the assessment method and the budget. So, we've been lucky, very, very lucky, each year that the alternative methods have been approved by each town. However, this year, we're not as lucky. Not only were we lucky that the four towns previously agreed on the assessment method, we were also lucky in the fact that the commissioner also approved it, which last year was an exception year with the fact of the timing of the submittal. So, the submittal came in right on the cusp or in late June, which would have driven us into a 112 budget. And so, when we came in, when I came into office this year and started meeting with DESI around our concerns of reviewing our regional agreement, understanding how we need to bring it into alignment with the statute, we discussed a lot around our assessment method and the process that we should be following. And so, always remembering that if a town rejected the alternative assessment method after March 31st and we are not in compliance with the law, then we are being driven by July 1st into a 112 budget, which causes more harm and reductions because it is actually based on our current fiscal year and not based on the fiscal year we're entering into, but the fiscal year that we are actually currently in. So, if we were to be driven into a 112 budget in July, we would be functioning under FY25 in FY26 year, which we already are at a deficit. And so, what you'll see on the next slide that's up now is actually the best practices for implementing an alternative assessment. And the point that I would like to focus in on is the timeline. Ideally, if we wanted to alter our assessment method and amend our regional agreement, this conversation in terms of the four towns and the assessment method should have been voted from September or October. Or, we should have actually presented it in September or October and had the discussion then. By November, December, all four towns would have agreed and voted on the alternative assessment method, whatever those percentages would have been. By January, we would have submitted to the commissioner for their approval, which would have then given the districts the opportunity to develop a budget with the agreed upon or approved assessments. And once the district had developed the budget, then the regional committee could have voted a budget with the correct assessment methods. Because currently, our understanding is that the Regional School Committee can only vote a budget with the agreed or approved assessment method. And right now, that's the one that's in our regional agreement. And so, the best practice that we should move towards and we will be moving towards as a district is on this slide that shows, starting in the upcoming year, September, October, we will call our four towns meeting again and discuss our assessment methods. Have that discussion and start to agree on the advantages. So, our practice, our current practice, really, we were following steps, but the timeline of implementation was not within best practice. And so, we are not in compliance at that point and that is why we are here now. And we're currently here in terms of March 31st. By law, and the statute is listed on our slide that's up, moving forward, by law, A, this Regional School Committee has to vote a budget. And then, our next steps is we are going to follow best practices as a district. So, our timelines and our commitment from the committee as well as the four towns will be that by November, December, we are clear on what assessment methods and percentages we would need to submit if we are going to amend and submit it to DESI. Once we submit it to DESI for the commissioner's approval, once we receive approval, then we are able to develop a budget. And once we're able to develop a budget and the school committee is able to vote on that budget, then we move forward. And so, with me on this slide, the next thing we're also going to do is continue to participate in technical assistance meetings with our DESI representatives, who have agreed to join us here this evening. We have Michelle Griffin, our Regional Governance Coordinator. We have Christine Lynch, our Governance and Facilities Program Manager. And we have Jay Sullivan, our Associate Commissioner for Finance and District Support Center. And I actually want to hand it over to Michelle and Jay and Chris to take over the presentation and then we'll have questions at the end. Michelle? We won't be able to see the slides, so you have to tell Megan which slide to put up.
You could present it using the present.
I can say you are muted.
Yeah, I'm muted now. Thanks, thank you very much, Superintendent, appreciate it. Thanks for having us be here today. We've got a brief, I don't know, 10 or 12 slide presentation that we want to kind of go through that explains the different methodologies in terms of the statutory method, the alternative method. And then, I'm sure there'll be a number of questions, so I'm going to send it off to Michelle, who's going to walk through the presentation for you.
Are you able to show the presentation or do you want me to share it on here as well as?
Yeah, could you present it and then it'll have to present on the white screen behind School Committee?
Okay, great. Now, can you see that? I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's up.
I'm not accustomed to using Google Meet, so I'm hoping, all right, good, you can see it. All right, there you go. So, as Jay said, actually, hold on one second. I'm not sure how to go forward on Google Meet. Shannon, can you help me with that?
Um. So, I just did the first cover page RSD assessment methods and if you could just scroll down through the PDF and go.
Okay, so just scroll down through my actual. So, did that work for you all?
Yep, graphic.
Great, thank you very much, sorry, I apologize. So, first, we have a, just, we wanted to, and thank you for having us, first of all, actually. But, we just wanted to do a quick overview of budget. This is a very quick and dirty version of the budget process. But, as you all know, you have one budget, which is classified into categories and line items. You have your operating section, your capital debt and transportation. The level of detail within your budget is whatever is desired by the Regional School Committee in the member towns. It must be consistent with the end-of-year report chart of accounts. So, that's DESI's end-of-year report chart of accounts. Consider when you're providing the detail in your budget that line item transfers require majority of approval of the school committee. So, once you've created your budget, you want to identify all sources of revenue to support your budget. You want to include Chapter 70, state transportation aid, general fund revenue, E and D used. But, you don't want to put in your budget grants revolving funds such as choice trust fund revenue, things like that. And we'll talk about that in a few minutes. And as Dr. Herman mentioned a few minutes ago, you want to include the method that you're going to be calculating your member assessments in your budget discussions. So, a couple of other considerations when you are creating your budget. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, your budget is not to include things like grants revolving accounts. That is, your budget should only include general fund expenses and corresponding receipts. That's because those are the only funds that are subject to your member town approval, for the most part. We can talk later about like capital stabilization, things like that, the creation of certain funds. But, in your annual budget, you only have to seek approval for your general fund expenditures from the member towns. That's not to say, though, that you should not include in your discussion all of your available funds, so that you can give an accurate picture of what it costs to run the school district. So, while you don't include anything but general funds in your budget, you want to make sure that the information that you have about additional sources of revenue that you're using to support your budget are provided to members along with your budget. Again, you may use excess and deficiency, for example, but it must be certified by DOR or you can't use it. And any amount above 5% has to be returned to the regional school, by the regional school committee, to the member towns. So, Dr. Z also mentioned a few of these other items on this slide. You're required to have a public hearing, and you're saying is we've already held that. And before you have the public hearing, you have to have a proposed budget that's been proposed by a majority of the school committee. You have to provide seven days' notice for that public hearing, but you're already passed that at this point. The Regional School Committee must then adopt a final budget by two-thirds vote of your full committee. And that is required by law to be passed 45 days before the first annual member town meeting, but not later than March 31st, so not later than today. Once you've passed your final budget for, you know, to propose to the member towns, your Regional School District Treasurer must send that budget in certified assessments to the members for their votes by their appropriating authorities within 30 days of the school committee's adoption of the budget, but not later than April 30th. So, assessment methods, which is kind of the main topic for tonight, I guess we should say. Your regional agreement must include a means of apportioning your operating, transportation, capital debt expenses to your members, your member towns. And there are two acceptable methods in law that you're allowed to use. One of them is qualified, however. So, the statutory method is always available to you. That's found in Chapter 70, Section 6 of the Mass General Laws. And we have a few resources at the end of this slide presentation that will lead you to those citations. All districts must, regional districts must have a way to implement statutory method in order to use it. So, whether or not it's in your agreement, you need to have a way to implement it. And we'll get into that, what it means at this moment. In some cases, regional agreements might need to be updated to really articulate the method that you're using. Then you have an alternative method, which is basically what Dr. Z just explained, that your district used last year. An alternative method can only be used by a regional school district if it's addressed and included in the regional school district agreement. So, for example, last year, you had a one-year amendment that was approved by the member town and approved after the fact by the commissioner that allowed you to use an alternative method, but only for the last school year or for budget year, this budget year, but only for this budget year. So, that alternative method no longer exists in your agreement. So, you're left with the statutory method, which is actually in your agreement. And I believe you're calling that the regional agreement method in your district. Annually, if you have an alternative method available to you in your agreement, you, as a school committee, can decide which method you'd like to use from year to year. So, to explain what the statutory method is, which again is available to every district, you first must ensure that every member town contributes their minimum required local contribution, often abbreviated as MRLC or MLC. That's determined every year by the commissioner. Then you have to add the member's share, the member town's share of whatever, of the portion, excuse me, of the regional school district's net school spending that exceeds the total required local contribution for all the members. So, you add up all MLCs, you figure out how much more you have to allocate in order to meet the regional school district's net school spending. And then you allocate that overage according to the terms of your regional agreement. Those are often called above minimum costs or above minimum contribution costs. And then you have to add in the member's share of, member town's shares of cost for transportation, capital project, debt service, other capital costs, and any other expenditures that are not included in your net school spendings. And again, spending. And again, that has to be allocated pursuant to the assessment provisions of your agreement. So, there's no state requirement for apportioning the above minimum local contribution, but there has to be a process in your regional agreement for doing so. Many regional agreements use a percentage of students, and I believe yours does this, from each town based on either one or multiple years of enrollment to apportion the above minimum as well as other non-net school spending expenses. That is, you know, transportation, capital, debt, service. Some regional schools also use equalized valuation as a factor, just by way of valuation. It's important to know and to use consistently what you mean by students. Are you using definition or what you mean by enrollment? Are you using foundation enrollment? Are you using just students that are sitting in the seats of your school buildings? So, that's just something to think about as well. Again, the following costs have to be assessed to members based on whatever formula is in your regional agreement, transportation, capital, debt. And it's important to note that methodologies for apportioning all of these costs might, as well as the methodology for apportioning the above minimum, may be different. So, you have to consult your regional agreement in order to implement the statutory method. An alternative method, which you don't have right now, but an alternative method allows you, if you had it in your agreement, basically, there's authority for you to be able to use that in the fourth paragraph of Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 16B. And if you had an alternative method available to you, it would be the sum of the following amounts. The members' share, each member's share of the net school spending for the regional school district, as well as the member's share of the regional school district's costs for transportation, capital project, debt service, other capital costs, and other expenditures not included in net school spending. And both of those shares would be allocated per the assessment provisions of the regional agreement. So, in order to, I'm sorry, skip the line. The combined sum of all the members' assessments for net school spending in Chapter 70 must at least equal the regional school district's net school spending requirement. So, again, you don't have that available to you, but, you know, we provide this information just for your reference. So, local approvals. If you have calculated your assessments pursuant to the statutory method, two-thirds approval of your appropriating authorities of your member towns is required. Important to note that if a local appropriating authority votes to appropriate the members' assessments, but doesn't take a separate vote on the budget, then that vote to appropriate the assessment also constitutes approval of the budget. The alternative method is different. As Dr. Z mentioned earlier, the appropriating authorities of all the members of the regional school district have approved the use of this method by a majority vote at the members' meetings. And again, it can be given by a separate vote of the appropriating authority or if a separate vote's not taken, if all of the members approve either the budget or their assessment, which is calculated based on the alternative method, then that seems approval of the method. And every year, if you had an alternative assessment method available in your agreement, you'd have to take a vote at the school committee each year to calculate your assessments pursuant to that method. And then, every member town has to vote each year to use the alternative assessment method. And again, as I've mentioned several times, an alternative method has to be in the regional agreement. If it's not, if you don't have an alternative method described in your regional agreement, then you must use the statutory method. So, here's an example of implementation of statutory method. I won't go through every single line, but basically, you have your budget here in this example. It's 1.1 million. You subtract your Chapter 70 aid, your required minimum local contributions, the sum of your towns, or both towns' minimum local contributions from, I'm sorry, all four towns, from your budget. And you subtract any other sources of income that you're applying to your budget. For example, you might be applying excess and deficiency. So, you'd subtract that and then you'd come up with the amount above Chapter 70 and your minimum local contribution. And I'm sorry, this was your operating expense budget. So, the amount above Chapter 70 and the minimum local contributions and your other sources of income is about 1.5 million. That would then be apportioned to your member towns based on your agreement language. Then you look at your transportation expenses. So, you've got regional transportation income, you subtract that from your, which you hopefully do. You subtract that from your total transportation cost and you come up with the amount that you have above your transportation reimbursement and you apportion that consistent with the language in your agreement. Same steps for debt and capital. Your debt and your capital are apportioned according to the language in your agreement. And then you come up with your total budget and you add up each town's assessment piece and you come up with each town's total assessment. And this, at the bottom, the person who created this just created kind of like a check, a way to check and make sure that the total budget number is the same. So, we've provided at the end a few resources. There are a couple of guidance documents that are on here. We've provided the link to the state law, which is all about regional school district budgets, or regional school districts, excuse me, but the budget sections are generally 16 and 16B. We've provided the regional regulation link. The regulations are generally at 603 CMR 41.05 concerning budgets. And we've provided a series of guidance documents concerning preparing member assessments, excess and deficiency funds. Fiscal intervention and oversight is basically if you do end up on a 112 budget, as Dr. Z mentioned. There's a document on the budget process. Our general website is here and then we have a new guidance document that was just published last week on municipal approval of a regional school district budget. So, I know I went really fast. So, if anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Okay, sorry, what's the name of the woman who just gave the presentation? I can't see.
Michelle.
Michelle, Michelle, thank you for that presentation. I thought I understood this coming in tonight, but now I'm more confused. So, I don't know if this is a question for Michelle or anyone else. Yes or no, do we have an alternative method in our regional agreement?
No.
We do not. Thank you.
No, you had a one-year method that was approved last year, but it expired on June 30th.
Okay, so, could we approve another one-year method this year?
You're putting the cart after the, before the horse. And as Dr. Z said earlier, that alternative assessment method should have been approved by the commissioner by the, by late December, early January, in order for you to use it to calculate this year's assessment.
Is that?
As of right now, you don't have one.
Did we do that last year? Did we have it approved that early?
You've done it for the last seven years and, and to be honest with you, we're not about, you know, we're not about to start entertaining this at the beginning of April.
Gotcha. So, is it like you sort of lost patience with us and we need to shape up? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, after six or seven years of doing this on a one-year basis, I would say the answer to that is in the affirmative, yeah.
Okay, who's that?
This is Jay Sullivan.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Deb, was your hand up? No, but I lost it. Sarah?
So, I also thought I understood it, but now I think I understand it correctly, I hope. So, someone tell me if I'm right or wrong.
Hold on, I'm sorry, if you're not speaking, can you mute? We have a lot of feedback happening in the room. Thank you.
We have been talking about two methods. The statutory method and the regional agreement method. And what I'm learning is that our regional agreement method is the statutory method implemented for our district. So, what's in the, what's in our regional agreement, that's the only method that's available to us that is the statutory method as modified by us collectively, or the towns, years, some years ago. And all we've been doing over the last few years is creating alternatives one year at a time by the wrong schedule. Am I right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Deb, where, excuse me, where can we find the schedule? The timeline for which these processes need to take place?
So, what I did was I, based on the conversations that we had and the average amount of time in conversating with Michelle, Jay and Chris, came up with a suggested timeline based on the fact that the budget-
be, should be approved by December 31st, in the year prior to the fiscal year that's going to be coming up. So any changes to your methodology for your regional agreement, FY '26, should have been approved by December 31st, '24. That wasn't the case last year, that wasn't the case the year before, that wasn't the case the year before that. We've let the district slide many, many years in a row, and we're, you know, I, it didn't seem like, according to the meetings that we were having with the administration, that you could come to a meeting of the minds in terms of the four districts. There was no alternative method that seemed to satisfy all parties. And if you're going to use an alternative method, it has to be unanimous. So as soon as one member says no, then the alternative method is out the window. You have to go back to the statutory method. So I believe that's why we feel like we are where we are right now, is because I don't believe the district's administration could come up with an alternative assessment methodology that satisfied all four members.
Well, the other part of that, if I may, is that, I mean, the school committee must prepare a budget by, again, March 31st. So without any method, any alternative method in your regional agreement, you're preparing a budget based on no legal authority. You have no legal method for preparing an alternative assessments based on an alternative method. You're hoping, and you have been hoping, and the superintendent alluded to this earlier, is that you hope every year that it get, by the time the assessments prepared through this alternative method that there's no legal authority for, gets to town meeting in the spring, that all four of your towns will not only approve the assessment number, but also the assessment method. And again, with one, one town, all, all, all that has to happen is one town votes either one of those two things down, and you have no budget. So it is not as, I think the superintendent did a wonderful job in terms of explaining, you know, why this is a dangerous method to use and has no basis in law. You know, so we're, we're all trying, I think, to outline the proper sequence of things to occur, so that you will get to town meeting, and you'll have the correct method. The school committee will be able to use the legalized method that's in your regional agreement, that's been approved by your towns, been approved by the commissioner, and the assessments can be prepared accordingly. And, you know, again, be presented to the towns at your spring town meeting.
I think.
And even with the statutory method, there has to be a methodology in the regional agreement for assessing costs that are outside of net school spending.
So I'm still.
So I think, to make, let me make sure I'm understanding Deb correctly. You are looking for where it says that, not inside this presentation.
Right.
Like, where is the, where would one go on the DSC website or somewhere to find this preferred timeline?
Or MGL, or any of that.
Or, right, or the law, or where, where would we look to have this information?
Well, if you go to our website, we have a regional school district website on the school finance that talks about, that has the law, the regulations, and in the regu, I mean, we've cited the law and regulations in the presentation.
Are you looking for the timelines for your budget, or the timelines for an approval of a regional school district amendment?
The.
Agreement amendment?
Amendment.
The amendment, okay.
Right, so if we were to have.
There is a document, there is a document called Regional School District Amendment Checklist. It's on the website for our regional school district. If you scroll down the page, there's a document called, this document maybe used as a guide for those interested in exploring the formation of regional, well, a regional school district checklist, but again.
Does it say there where this timeline is?
It, it's, it's weaved in a number of different sections of both the law, the regulations, the checklist. There's guidance documents that were on the, the back page of the presentation that Michelle provided, and it has, you know, guidance on preparing assessments, you know, methodologies for approving a regional school district agreement or amendment. So it's, it's kind of weaved throughout many of our documents.
And on the front page of the regional school district website, under the Regional School District Agreement Checklist, there's a section called Amendment Process. And the final bullet says, in the case of any new regional district agreement or any agreement that changes to, the grade serves, the regulations require that all requisite approvals, including the commissioner's approval, shall be obtained no later than the preceding December 31st, for the effective date to following July 1st.
Okay, thank you.
If someone asked why they didn't tell us this seven years ago, I mean, this is bullshit.
Believe it.
Okay.
You didn't ask.
No, they were aware of it.
We are not going to have, we are working on moving forward. We are where we are.
I hear you.
This is the position we're in, and we need to move forward and have a budget by the end of tonight, and take care of our kids, and do the best we can, so.
We're all stuck in a bad situation. I totally agree with you.
Uh, Irv.
Sit.
I think Chris was just saying it was in the past.
Oh, I, I know, I think Sarah Best caught Irv. I wanted to jump in.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear because everyone's talking.
Right, I wanted to jump in and see that, what everyone was saying, and see that, I know we're talking about the current, and that's why I spoke about current practice and moving to best practice. We wanted to, to walk through this. So I do want us to focus on how do we get through the process this evening, and how do we move forward for our children and our students? And that's the focus of this whole thing. So I'm sorry, Irv, I know it's your turn.
No, that's fine. I had two things, and, and, really, one is that can both methods exist and be approved at the same time?
No, I mean, you, you, well, let me back track. Both methods can be.
Can the school committee have, have the ability to choose between A and B?
Well, yes, well, there is a choice, but the, the B, the problem is, Mr. Rhodes, that the B alternative method expired on June 30th.
I, I, I really understand that. I'm just talking about in the future. Can both of them be a part of the agreement?
Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
All right, all right. So in other words, in terms of moving forward, that's something we need to keep in mind, that we can have them both as a part of the agreement, so that we can choose as we move forward.
It makes, it makes a great deal of sense to have them both be part of your agreement. Yes, sir.
Right, right. So the second question is, that came as a surprise to me, is that the regional school committee decides on which method to use. I mean, that's sort of powerful, because I had thought that that was something, that the four towns came together and said, hey, this was, but what you're saying is that the school committee has that authority and responsibility.
That's correct.
If you, once you had, so if you were to have an alternative assessment method in your agreement, right, you would have to place it in the agreement by creating an amendment to your agreement. And your towns would have to approve that amendment, consistent with the amendment provisions of your agreement. So the towns would initially approve that method being placed in your agreement. And then, from year to year, the school committee could choose between using the statutory method or the alternative method that's approved in your agreement. And not only the towns, but the commissioner has to approve an amendment to your agreement. So whatever procedure you come up with, you know, to create an alternative method, does have to be approved in the first instance in an amendment to the agreement by the member towns and the commissioner.
That's an important point.
Once you have it in your agreements, you, as school committee, can, from year to year, decide whether you'd like to use that method or the statutory method.
Now, that's, that is, that's profound and revolutionary in terms of the school committee. We have never thought that we had that authority. We always thought that the authority for that was with the four towns. So what you're saying, we can do that, and the four towns then would have to go along with it, which, I would think.
Well, they don't. One system, so Irv, it has to be in our agreement. So what, what they're saying is that we would have to amend our agreement and put alternative methods in our agreement. Once the towns agree on the alternative method, and the commissioner approves it, and it rests within our agreement, year to year, if, for example, we say we have option A, B, and C as methods outside of the statutory, year to year, the school committee can then say, once the four towns and the commissioner approves it, and it's a part of our agreement, the school committee can then say, this year, we will use method B. This year, we would use method C. But the only, what gives the committee that authority is that the appro, methods has to be in our agreement. And so if they're moving forward, if we need to have a flexible alternative method, the four towns and the commissioner have to agree for us to amend our agreement, which then the school committee will be able to always have the choice as to how to flex. But because for the past seven years, or six years, however long, we have only been submitting for fiscal year '23 only, for fiscal year '25 only, you have only been submitting one-year amendments versus amending our entire agreement and giving the school committee the option to choose between methods.
Just to be clear, there's only one of two methods. It can't be A, B, or C. It can only be A or B. Sorry to be, you know.
And just to clarify further, to take, take it one step further, once the school committee decides which method to use, then it proposes its budget, and it proposes its member assessments based on that method. If it is the statutory method that you've chosen, you only need two-thirds of your member towns to approve your budget. If it is the alternative assessment method, you do need all of your member towns to approve the use of that method.
In, in your case, it's 75%, because two-thirds is three out of your four minutes, so.
Yeah, so statutory, you'd need three out of four. If it was alternative, you'd need all four to approve using that assessment method when they consider the budget.
Thank you. I have your hand.
Thank you.
William?
So this may be a dumb question, but where is our regional agreement, and where does it sit?
It's in board docs. So if you go to policy, A, A, C dash E, ACC dash E.
A, C.
ACC dash E.
It's also linked in today's board docs.
Is it? I didn't see that in there.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Tillman?
Thanks, so thanks for the presentation and the clarification. So since the alternate method has to have the same wording and percentages presumably every year, it wouldn't have helped over the last few years with the guardrails, because we always picked different percentages. And since we don't have that alternate yet, and it sounds like a complicated process to get to some, I think we should move forward for tonight to figure out how we get a budget passed without the existence of an alternate method.
Excellent. Sarah?
I agree with Tillman, but I would like to go back to Slide 10 if we could, because one thing here confuses me. So the only method we have right now is the statutory method, the, the method that's in our regional agreement. And it says, two-thirds approval is required. Is that two-thirds approval? Do we have to, do they have to approve the method? It's already in our agreement, or does this mean two-thirds approval of the assessments?
They have to approve the assessments.
Of the assessments? So we don't need a vote on the method, because it's in the agreement?
No.
Correct.
Doesn't matter. You can choose either A or A.
You don't have a B. You don't have a B in here.
Thank you. It was just, it was just ambiguous here, thank you. So yes, we should move on.
Anna, was your hand up? Oh, we can't hear you. Hold on.
Oh, shoot, we can't hear you.
Okay, sorry. It was, but it's, but that was the same question as William, so no.
Perfect. Okay. Any further questions for this piece? No. Okay.
One quick question.
Yep, go ahead.
So what I'm understanding is that the statutory method's going to look at the numbers that they give us for each town, and then we're going to look at our rolling enrollment for five years for each town. Where's that data at? Like, how do we know how, what the percentage is for each town of children? Is that accessible somewhere?
Shannon does that magic.
It was shared after one of the last four towns' meetings. I can send it to you again, William.
Thank you. Okay, so to make sure we are all in the same understanding, we have our regional agreement method to use tonight, correct?
No.
Yes.
Correct.
Statutory. Same thing.
Same thing.
Nope. We are.
Deb?
to the five-year rolling moving average that is in our assessment agreement. And the part of the pie we're divvying up is whatever we vote with all revenues subtracted out, Chapter 70, et cetera, minus the total of all the minimum local contributions. Okay, because my understanding is what's in our regional agreement does not have the minimum local contributions part in it. So.
No, that's established by Chapter 70 annually.
Right, right.
It doesn't, but it does cite the Chapter 70, Section 6, the statute that addresses the statutory method. But you're right, it doesn't actually talk about the minimum contribution piece.
So in my mind, we don't have the regional assessment method available. We have to go with statutory. And that means you subtract off the 16 million, that's the minimum local contributions for all our towns, and we're dividing up the rest of it, whatever the budget is, with all those parts subtracted out, according to a prescribed method.
And whatever regional transportation you're expecting to get.
Right, yep.
Whatever Chapter 70 you're expected to get, that type of thing, yeah.
Okay. And you're, and what are, we, we have had many different vocabularies. It'd be great if we just had one unique name for each method, and one unique method for each name. If you couldn't, if you could define those, like, really slowly for me, that'd be great.
I think I can try.
Okay.
We have the, okay. Please correct me if I am wrong, but I've been thinking about this a lot. So, all right, if our budget is, say, $20 million, to make nice round numbers, right, the top 10 million is the Chapter 70, the rural aid, the things that are paid for by the state, we don't talk about that part. The remaining 10 million, we have, say, 5 million of the minimum local contribution, which is what the commissioner decides. It is that remaining 5 million that we then use our regional agreement method to assess. However, our. However, our regional agreement method, the way I am understanding it, is dollars per kid regardless of what town they come from. So if it is ten thousand dollars to educate a student at the district, Amherst pays ten thousand dollars, Palan pays ten thousand dollars, Leverett and Chutesbury. Everybody is the same dollars per kid. It is about the number of children that you have. Is that correct?
Yes.
Based on a five-year rolling average.
What are we calling that? Give it a name.
That is the regional agreement.
That is the regional agreement. And how does that differ from the state statutory?
So the state statutory says that whole bottom ten million dollars
Yeah.
is defined on that minimum local contribution, how much your town can pay per kid. So that means it could be eleven thousand dollars to educate a kid in Amherst, but nine thousand dollars to educate from Chutesbury.
I don't-
The only amount that the state can dictate to local districts is what's called net school spending, which is the bare minimum. It's the foundation budget. And, and as, as we've said many times when this was first passed, when you build a house, you don't put a roof on the foundation. Most districts spend above the foundation budget. And what goes into that calculation that you just referred to is the amount that you're spending above net school spending. In, in essence, each, each of your districts, each of your member towns, a, a, a calculation is made as to what they can afford to spend in terms of their, what chapter seventy views as their wealth, whether that's equalized property valuation or income in those, in those particular towns. And a min, a minimum local contribution is established for each of your four member towns. That's money that has to come out of their local tax base in order to pay for their, to pay for education. Anything over and above that, that plus the state aid gives you your net school spending requirement. The minimum local contribution plus your chapter seventy gives you your net school spending requirement. Anything that you're spending above that net school spending requirement has to be broken down and assessed per your agreement.
William.
But there are certain costs that are not in this, in net school spending, things like transportation, capital, what have you.
Right.
There are some costs that the district must bear that, that are not in, in the foundation budget. So again, that, that's why there's a separate, that's why we keep saying there's a separate assessment for transportation, capital, and debt service, and anything above the net school spending requirement.
Did you have a?
So I spent a fair amount of time looking at this document, uh, guidance for regional school districts that has two examples. So on page three, I mean, it's, it's, I got it from the website. It has assessment methodologies, it's statutory assessment method, and exists, and it goes into all these examples. And on page three, it has two different examples about how you divvy up, what did you call it, above minimum contribution costs. And one involves subtracting out the sum of all the minimum local contributions for all the towns, and then splitting that up. And the other does not subtract out the minimum local contributions. It just takes the whole above minimum contribution and divvies that up. One is called the statutory assessment method on your sheet, and the other is called the alternative assessment method.
We couldn't really talk about it.
And you're saying that, I, I, so that's the language I'd like to use. But I'm not sure which of these two is available. I thought we had said that it was the state statutory assessment method with the minimum local contribution part subtracted out. But then I just got all confused the last ten minutes.
Sorry.
It is the statutory assessment method.
With, so we're, we're, we're taking
Do you-
Our total-
Want me to share that document? Would that help?
It's, I, I, it's on the webs, it's on your website, because it was a Word document link.
Yeah. I, I come across it all the time. Um, do, okay. Yeah, guidance for regional school districts. And it, okay.
Statutory method is like a two-part process. So again, we've, we've, we've indicated that you take off the minimum total of the four towns' minimum local contributions.
Okay.
That's, let's say, step one.
Yep.
Step two would be, okay, you add that, let's say, to the state aid, general fund revenue, and it's not sufficient
Yep.
to meet the regional school committee's budget. So in the example that was provided before, there's another five million dollars that's needed
Right.
in order to fund the school committee's budget. So you have state aid, the sum of all of the minimum local contributions, and you still need five million dollars to support the regional school committee budget. That five million dollars is then apportioned according to your five-year rolling average. So as, as was said earlier, if that amounts to, you know, a ten thousand dollar per pupil amount, then, then that's, that's what it would be. In, in addition to that, again, leaving out for the moment, I mean, I think we're just talking about operating costs for the most part. But you can't forget, as we've said, you still have transportation to do, but that's in accordance to your, in accordance with your regional agreement. You still have capital, but that's in accordance with your regional agreement. So there's no minimum contribution. There's no two-step process there. You just immediately go to your, to your, um, regional agreement to determine how do we apportion each town's share of transportation costs? How do we apportion each town's share of capital costs? But in terms of the two methods available, statutory method is a two-part process. Some of the minimum contributions, anything over that to support the school committee budget is apportioned according to the provisions of your regional agreement. Right now, the only option you have, as we've mentioned, is the statutory methodology. Moving forward, you can propose an amendment that would outline a one-step process. Like all of your, let's just say, all of your operating costs, costs are apportioned according to a five-year rolling average. It's not the two-part process that I just mentioned. All of it, let's say, might be apportioned according to a five-year rolling average. Or whatever else you might come up to that's agreeable to all of your four towns. But right now, you have that two-step process. Um, that's what's available in your regional agreement.
Okay, so I have on my list William, Sarah, Bridget, or, and Tillman.
So quick question. On the, because I'm not so smart at all in this, anyway. On the, um, statutory method, is that always looking at a five-year rolling? Or is that because that's what our regional agreement says?
That's what your regional agreement says.
So if we're having to go with the statutory method, then we don't do the five-year rolling? No, we do. We do?
No, you don't.
Okay.
You do for the above minimum operating costs.
The, the simplest example is how Chris described it. Let's just say you have a twenty million dollar budget. Your chapter seventy is five million, your minimum local contributions are another ten. Well, in order to get to your twenty million dollar budget, you've got to assess five million dollars. How do you assess that? Based on what your regional agreement says, and that's usually ba, I, it sounds like that's based on a five-year rolling average.
Right.
Thank you.
That's, that was the simplest way to put it, and I appreciate the fact that Chris said that.
Well, other regional agreements have a different methodology. Michelle pointed that out in the slide presentation. It's some use just one year, the last year's, you know, enrollment numbers to determine a percentage. Some have combinations of property value that, there's an option. That's why that piece of it needs to be spelled out in your regional agreement to determine how are you going to yourselves apportion over and above what the state is telling you you must. As Jay said, you must apportion, each town must apportion at least its minimum contribution. That's state law. Don't have, don't have a, you can't do much about that. It's state law. You must approve that. But anything over and above that, you can determine amongst yourselves, and to the extent you draft language and you want to change it from a five, right now you have a five-year rolling average. You want to change it to something else, that's, that's up to you. Uh, but you would need to propose an amendment and go through the process that we mentioned before. Have your towns approve it, have the commissioner approve it, et cetera, to use a different methodology. But right now, you're faced with a statutory method, the two-step method, minimum contribution, anything above the minimum, five-year rolling average. Or operating costs.
And, and just to put a point on that, the five-year rolling average makes sense in that we've seen districts have a one-year. They base it on last year's enrollment. And what can happen on year-to-year swings with smaller districts that are part of the region, their assessments can vary wildly from year to year. So it almost makes sense to do a five-year rolling average, and that kind of helps smooth things out from a year-to-year basis.
Thank you. Sarah.
Again, we only have one method. It's the statutory method as implemented according to our regional agreement. For that, okay? So I would like to endorse Tillman's request that we move on to the budgets. We can always continue to improve our understanding of assessment methods and what in the future we can do, but we have to get a budget passed tonight.
Thank you. Bridget.
So, Sarah, you're not gonna like this. Sorry.
Or Tillman.
Or Tillman, and I see the logic in what you're saying, and I just, I just wanted to like, while we have the experts in the room, walk through the scenario that we had from our perspective. Because I see from your perspective, it looked like everything was changing every year after year, but from our perspective, we had the same, um, method that only alternated according to the guardrails. And it was based off the statutory method, so we didn't see a lot of risk in using that method due to that because it was very similar. But it, in putting the guardrails, we were protecting those smaller towns. It's no surprise that we're doing that. There's a bill in the House now to try and do that. It's an ongoing thing. The budget we passed, the way that we passed it, everybody's under six point five percent or at six point five percent. But if we pass this budget that we pass that we feel like is best for the students, some of our small towns go up to twenty-two percent, right? And the amount for the, for the one, for the bigger town is really small. After you take the minimum age out, eight out, it's only seventy-two thousand dollars. But they failed our budget assessment last Monday, which throws our budget out and puts us back at the table. Um, and puts us in a situation, instead of cutting almost a million eight hundred and ninety thousand, now we have to cut two point five million, right? And we don't even have the opportunity now to go back to our four towns and talk about it. And so I think to us, it was a real surprise that we'd have to come and vote on the budget tonight like this. And I'm just wondering, are there any alternative tweaks, small other possible pathways so that we can return to our communities and have a discussion and not sink the ship of the, of the schools?
Oh, I mean, you should always go back to your communities and have a discussion. But in terms of, you can't have a negotiation. I mean, it, you know, to some degree, there is, as we noted, one methodology, you know, to prepare the assessments. Um, you know, it's not a matter of going to each of the towns and say, how much might you, you want to give? You know, town A or town B, what, what do you want to give? It's, you know, it's, it's not a negotiation between the towns or amongst the towns.
Well, I, I would, I would say in the past six years, that's exactly what it's been.
Yeah.
Prior to that, they said, what can you afford? And they moved those guardrails every year to protect certain districts so that they, so that they could get unanimous approval of the budget.
Yeah.
I understand why it was done, but it's just that the horse has left the barn at this point, and there's not much we can do about it. Every year, you've had a one-year agreement, and uh, you know, those negotiations had already taken place by the time we've gotten to this point in time of the year, I believe. So, you know, while, while we heard about guy, guardrails, those guardrails moved on an annual basis every year. So I think that's what the problem, I, I see there's been a couple of people who have had their hair trashed for quite some time. I don't want to comment the conversation.
Irv?
Yes, um, it, it's, it, it seems to me that we're, that we are in a situation in terms of tonight of, it's brinkmanship at this point in time. Unfortunately, that's where we are. Um, so the, uh, the town, uh, council is already disapproved of what we had voted before. So what, whatever we vote tonight means that we send it forward to the town council and town manager, and they could disapprove it. And, uh, that would put us into a horrible situation. Uh, and, uh, because we wouldn't have a budget approved by the thirty-first as we're supposed to have. We will not. We can approve the budget on our timeline by the thirty-first. But that's only the first step in this town. We approve it, we've met our statutory requirement. However, the, uh, town councilor and the town manager can say no. Now, if, if they say no, the town manager or town council says no to what we put forward, I don't know where that puts us.
Well, it has to be voted at each town meeting, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, but it's two-thirds.
The town council can say whatever they want, but it's the, it's the voters that decide.
Well, it's two-thirds.
Other four, other three towns would have to decide, uh, whether to, uh, do, band together and do two-thirds and then overrule Amherst. That is a possibility. But, but mind me, that's where we are. And, 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 and I think what I want to do is get on with it and get this budget passed tonight and send it on.
Thank you. Tillman.
In that spirit, can Shannon tell us if the proposed budgets that we have seen and that are also attached to today, um, tonight's meeting follow the statutory method?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our single, our single method available to us. Uh, Anna.
So, um, I was looking at the regional agreement, and, um, I don't find any mention of transportation costs in the regional agreement. But I'm just gonna assume that Shannon knows how to apportion the regional, the transportation costs among the three ta, four towns. Um, I, I'm in agreement with Tillman, and Irv, I think we need to start looking at the budget options and pick one and push it forward. Um, we need to vote on it tonight, and I don't, I don't know that there's any new information coming out from this discussion.
Uh, transportation is section, uh, ten.
But does it talk about costs or just that it's included?
Uh, these costs provided transportation, blah, 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 shall include in the district's operating cost. It's at the end. Uh, William.
Great.
I, thank you, Shannon. I, I do see that we have the five-year rolling average, but it seems different from what was presented at another budget. So is there any way that we could clarify what our actual, for this coming up budget, what the percentages are from each town?
Yes, I will, I don't have it in front of me, but I will pull it up when we get to the budget discussion.
Okay, because I, I feel like we have one thing that has one number and a different thing that has something else, so. If you could clarify that at some point, it would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I have Deb and Jennifer, and then you're-
So the, the letter we got on Tuesday, District and School Finance Guidance, Guidance on Municipal Approval of a Regional School District Budget, March twenty twenty-five. The footnote four, a vote by the local appropriating authority to appropriate the member's assessment shall constitute approval of the RSC's budget. to appropriate the members' assessment shall constitute approval of the RSC's budget. So regardless of how the warrant is written, if an individual town approves the assessment of the thing that we passed, that implies they're approving the total assessment on our budget of all the towns. And then it can be di, and then if they did that, it would be divvied up according to the state statutory method, which would not be what they approved at their town meeting.
No, they're, they're only approving, each town's only approving its own assessment. So, you know, if, if, if a town voted to approve the assessment presented to it by the treasurer, you know, in accordance with their budget, that town, one town, would have approved it. Still has to go the other three towns. Is that, maybe I misunderstood.
No, I, I think you're right, Chris. I think, I understood it the same way you did, I think. So again, if, if three of the members approve their assessments, then your budget is in essence passed.
Yeah.
You, you need a three-to-one vote at least in order to get your budget approved. If you can't get three, three votes, then you're not gonna have a budget.
Go ahead, Kim.
So, Jay, hi, this is Mark Terry. I'm counsel to the district. I think the question that Deb is trying to frame is if the assessment is, is put out to the member towns, but one community appropriates more than the assessment, what's the impact of that on the overall budget? So, no? Did I not get that right?
So.
I can try again.
So the bu, budget we voted has a total town assessment of, hang on. Twenty-five, twenty-four, six, nine. Sarah's got it. Where is it?
Twenty-four million, six hundred ninety-nine thousand, thirty-five dollars.
That. But the warrants in the past haven't had the total in them. But say Town Deb looks at that and says, I'm gonna, I'm gonna approve that. That's fine with me. So I'm approving the bottom line is how I read that footnote, not my part of it or my part of it and the total. And the reason I'm asking is because now we're facing, if, if these towns have these assessments in front of them and they vote for that particular assessment, which corresponds to the 24 million something, but then it needs to be divvied up according to the state statutory method, that's a different assessment than the one that they're voting.
The assessment that they're voting is based on the statutory method.
Right.
Because we're gonna vote a new budget.
Yeah.
Well, I just want to know the consequences of that, should we not? Because we have them here and I think I want clarity on the footnote.
Each member is voting for their share of the ru, regional school district budget. If three quarters of the members approve their shares, then you have a passed budget.
They may vote the total budget, but that total budget should have been presented to them with their piece of the assessment attached to it. They're not, they're not committing themselves to 24 million, oh, oh, whatever the number was that you, you just, you know, just indicated. They're approving a budget, and as part of that budget, you needed to provide, and the treasurer of your district needs to provide the assessment to that town. So, you know, they can either approve the assessment, which, as, as we've said, approves the budget, or very few districts do this, to my, my knowledge. But in any event, they can approve the budget, but it doesn't mean that you can then change, you know, their assessment and change it and, and come up with some different number than what you already certified to them was their assessment from the budget that you approved.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I still don't have clarity on this. So when we voted the budget that is now out there in the ether at all the towns, it is not based on any statutory method. The bottom line, the 24 million something is divvied up according to an invalid method. And we have to vote a new budget. Should we not vote a new budget? Should we not be able to agree on a new budget by midnight tonight? Is that budget still live or is just dead? That number's dead. It just doesn't go anywhere. We have no budget because the assessment method failed. We have no budget.
So Deb, if I could jump in, you're correct. We have no, we have no budget because the assessment method failed. What you are doing tonight, you are correct, Deb. So tonight, you are voting a budget, and the only option we have is that statutory method because the assess, the opportunity to alter our method has passed. So you can only vote a, a budget based on the method that is approved, and right now, that's the statutory.
And, and Mark and Desi agree with that. Okay, thank you. I'm good, Deb.
Hey, Dr. Z, was that your comment or did you have something else you wanted to add?
No, that, that was, that was my comment.
Jennifer?
So I would love to jump right to the document that I assume Shannon and Dr. Z posted that has options. Um, it looks like there's three options. Um, I, I think I might be jumping agenda items, but.
We are a little bit. Are we all done having this conversation? Yes, excellent. Okay.
It's the document called 33125, Budget to be Voted. It's in Agenda Item C.
Before we, before we move on, can I ask if we're, if we still need Desi to be present?
I think we are all set. I think, thank you very much to Desi for joining us.
Thank you.
For this conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
See you next month.
Thank you all.
Also, if you, do we have any further questions for our district attorney?
I just want to clarify, I do.
Yep.
Okay. Somebody said that, that, I guess Deb, that Amherst, but in fact, any of the towns could, if two of them reject what we send to them after tonight, unless we can get a third budget passed by July 1, we're going to the 112th.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. And then we're all gonna be meeting all summer long to try to figure.
Also, yes.
Get a new, yeah, more town meetings and all that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're all set. Thank you very much for joining us tonight.
So, do, I was just gonna jump into the document, but do we want to like, present it or have Shannon go over the options or I, I can see them, but do?
Yep, thank you. Um, okay. Are we all comfortable moving to our next, or skipping agendas and moving to our FY '26 operating budget discussion and vote? Uh, Anna, your hand's up?
It was just to, uh, to start the conversation.
Oh, great.
Once we get there.
Okay. Um, yes, can we put this up? Perfect. And then Jennifer, and then Anna, or Shannon, do you want to present this budget? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna walk through it and then.
Perfect.
Then you go and have your discussion. Um, so I put together three options, and these are, this is using the statutory method based on our regional agreement. The first one is our, an overall budget increase of 5.13%. And it requires a reduction of $812,001, which is the same reduction as the previously voted budget. So this would leave, uh, if we jump down to assessments, Amherst at 4.81%, Pelham at 22.97%, Leverett at 14.10%, and Chutesbury at 7.65%, which are an increase over FY '25. On the change column to the right of that, you can see what those actual dollar increases are as opposed to just the percentages. This is an overall six and a half percent in ass, uh, assessment increases from 20, fiscal year '25. The, this could potentially restore our, um, four middle school teachers, two high school counselors, um, the prep academy position, the reinstatement of the world language, and an additional 194,000 that requires some further discussion with the district that we didn't, um, fully finalize yet, but would certainly be needed. On the second page of this, I wanted to put together the picture of what are the positions that would still be reduced or what we cut back, um, to meet this $812,000 deficit. Um, I will note that in the amount to reach target, the 194 is still in there that we can reduce, um, or, or restore back. And, but I didn't have it specified, um, out just yet because it required some further discussion. And the second option is an overall increase of 4.61%, which requires a reduction of 997,000. And with this, we'd be able to restore, um, four of the middle school teachers, two high school counselors, the prep academy, world language, and there's about 9,000 and change left over that we would have to, um, we could use towards a restoration of some FT. On the second page of this, um, again, I wanted to give the full picture of what these reductions mean for us and for our students. The option number three is an overall budget increase of 4.03%. It requires a reduction of 1.2 million. And we could only restore, um, approximately three positions, three professional positions with this. Um, and again, the, uh, the, I'll read off the assessment just in case it's still too small. At the 1.2 million deficit, Amherst would be at a 3.17, Pelham at a 21.11%, Leverett at a 12.37%, and Chutesbury at a 5.73%. And then I, again, I repeated just what, what would be reduced if this was the deficit that we faced and didn't receive any additional funding. Lastly, on this next page, this is not an option that I'm saying we should vote for. I would not want us to vote for this, but because it was asked of me to present, I just wanted to be sure it was up here, is if we needed to hold Leverett to a 6.5%, what would that mean for the other assessments for the other towns? And what would that deficit mean? Which is, um, it would require a reduction of 2.5 million. And with that, Amherst's assessment would go down by 2.3%. So they, they would reduce. They would not increase at all. Pelham's would increase by 14.86, Leverett would be at 6.57, and Chutesbury's would also reduce by 0.72%. So overall, our assessment would go down from 25 to 26, and we would only receive, um, of the total operating budget, $122,000 from FY '25 to FY '26. And that's just not feasible for our district. And then the last page is the motions for, um, approving the budget should you choose to go with option one, two, or three.
Thank you, Shannon. Jennifer?
Great, thank you, Shannon. So as we've discussed quite often, there's the size of the pie, and then there's how we split up the pie. I think we've all learned that we have no op, we have no choices as to how to split the pie. There's one way to split the pie, and Shannon has shown us in three options, the only, in three scenarios, that we only have one option for splitting the pie. So I am most in favor of option one. The size of the pie for option one is what we all determined as a committee at our last meeting was what we wanted for our district. It restores the middle school teachers. It restores counselors. It restores prep academy, and it reinstates the world language. So I, I feel like that's, that's this, the, the option that I'm most in favor of is option one. It looks really painful for, um, Pelham, Leverett, and Chutesbury. I don't see, but I don't see any way, I don't see any way around it. So I'm, I'm in favor of option one.
Thank you. Anna?
I too am in favor of option one. You know, as Jennifer said, it's what we decided the school needs in order, the schools need. And, um, I do believe Chutesbury would vote for this. So I think we should go.
Uh, Irv?
I'm, I'm, uh, in favor of option two. Because, uh, the first option has already been in some ways, um, turned down by at least one town. And, 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 and I think that it's been, the, the, at least one town's made very clear that, uh, they do not wish to go very much above what they have already, what the town manager has already put forward. So for me, option two is more realistic. It, it makes more sense in relationship to the other towns and also in terms of Amherst being able to come up to that number. And so, uh, I could not go along with option one because I think that we're already going down that path.
Tillman?
Thanks. So, um, if I followed the official guidance that my town gave me before they knew what the assessment method was, right? I would, uh, have to vote for option three, and thanks for calculating that. But clearly, that's not an acceptable solution in terms of the outcome for the schools. So, um, I think, um, our Leverett's hands are tied in terms of what we have to do with the, with the assessment method, considering that it is such a large increase and considering that it's not quite clear what we would do with the extra money. I would hope we could settle on option two, which is just a tad less painful for the, the towns to that than for option one.
Um, Anna, Anna, did you have your hand up again? Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
So, um, what I would say is my understanding of Amherst is that they are willing to pay more than they had initially said with the, with the stipulation that the other towns paid their share. And so I think it is worth, uh, I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't count out Amherst in contributing their fair share of the option one budget. If they know that the other towns are also contributing their fair share, I think that they could make it happen. So I, I, I wouldn't not vote for that budget because of the town meeting that recently happened. That's, but other people have different ideas, so that's just my interpretation.
Shannon?
Um, I just want to clarify that although in option one, the remaining 194,000 was not specifically outlined for positions, does, it, it does not mean that we don't need it and we're willing to cut that. I want to make that really clear. We just have not had the opportunity to go back to the high school and the middle school principals to really hash out what would make the most sense for the district. But it's not that we're saying, oh, this is extra. We don't really need it.
Thank you. Uh, William?
I think as Jennifer said, we sat here a week ago, two weeks ago, whenever it was. And what we felt the budget we needed to pass is option one. How we split the pie has changed, and so I'm still standing by that.
I will say I had a conversation with the John Tricky of Pelham Finance Committee today. And that the option one gets us back to our regional agreement method, that, that is what the finance committee will support.
I'm sorry, can I ask a clarification question?
Yep.
You said if option one gets us, all of them get us back to the regional agreement? So I'm confused what that statement is.
The conversation he and I had was about option one with the 22.97% for Pelham. Uh, I think it was Bridgette.
Just very quickly, I was at last Monday's town council meeting, and the town manager. and the town manager did state as they voted down our assessment that it was, he, on his word, he said it was about the assessment that, um, that four point eight one was a number that they felt they could come up with.
Uh, Sarah?
Yeah, I wonder if Shannon can now tell us what the percentage, how big each, in percentage terms, how big each town's slice is of the assessment pie?
Yep. So it's on, in option one, it, Amherst increase would be nine hundred and five thousand and change. Palom would be two hundred and forty-four thousand. Leverett, two hundred and thirty thousand and Shute's Berry, a hundred and twenty-six thousand over FY twenty-five.
That's, that's not my question. My question is according to the, what is the regional agreement apportionment strategy? Is Amherst get seventy-nine point nine percent, for example, of the assessment? Of the total?
So are you saying if you take Amherst's assessment amount divided by the total assessment?
Well, I'm asking how you calc, I mean, is there, William asked earlier, what is the relative slices of this?
Students.
Students? Oh, excuse me, I thought you said the, of the.
Part, uh, that's the above the minimum contribution that's determined by the five-year rolling average of enrollment. Amherst, um, average, five-year average is seventy-nine point three seven percent. Palom is five point twelve percent. Leverett is seven point three percent and Shute's Berry is eight point two one percent.
Can you say that slower? We can't write that fast.
And it was, it was shared out after a four towns meeting. Um, it, so Amherst is seventy-nine point three seven percent. Palom is five point twelve percent. Leverett is seven point thirty percent and Shute's Berry is eight point two one percent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deb?
Yeah, I've got a different reason. I mean, I, I like consensus. I don't think we're gonna get consensus. I, I don't wanna cause towns pain. But, um, the bigger the base is now, the more we'll get next year and our expenses are gonna keep going up at rates that are higher than, um, four percent. Or until something gives, um, hopefully it's the state. We're just gonna have to keep cutting. So the bigger we keep it now, it'll mean the less we have to cut further along down the line. And, um, I, Derek Shea at the Amherst Regional, at the Amherst School Committee meeting called this carnage, the word that keeps coming to mind is cannibalism. I mean, different parts of our budget increase at rates that we can't control and so all we can do is cannibalize our staff. And this just slows the process. So anything to slow the process down and allow us to shrink at a rate that makes more sense, hopefully, with some new insight from our next stage of our performance-based accounting. Um, so the more we hold it off, I think the better we're gonna be in a position to make sensible reductions rather than cannibalizing our people.
Jennifer?
I'm going to move option one. I move to adopt a budget of thirty-seven million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six for the Amherst-Palom Regional School District using the statutory method as outlined in section six and section seven of the regional agreement and assess member towns as follows. Amherst nineteen million, seven hundred and forty-four thousand, eight dollars. Palom, one million, three hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and three dollars. Leverett, one million, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and three dollars. Shute's Berry, one million, seven hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? Sarah?
Yeah, I, I had been leaning towards option two because I thought it was going to be too much for some towns, even though the differences are pretty small really unless you, we take those mind-boggling two and a half million dollars in cuts. Um, the differences in percentage increase over the previous year are pretty small. But I'm encouraged by what I've heard, um, from my fellow members about their discussions with their town financial people. And there's no guarantees, of course, cause it's gonna be up to town meeting and town council, but, um, I will support this option one.
William?
So I have, it's probably for Shannon, this question. So thank you for sharing the percent of pupils, I guess, the percent of students for the rolling five-year average. So after listening to tonight's presentation, the assessment required on option one is twenty-four thousand, six ninety-nine, oh, three, five. So that is what has to get divided by the statutory regional agreement assessment method? Is that correct, Shannon?
Yes, sort of. Only a portion of, over the minimum local contribution is then calculated to use that, um, enrollment percentage. So, yes, to an extent.
So do we have that data somewhere so we can see what the actual pie is that we're having to divide up? Cause when I do it, I, I come up with very different numbers when I use the percentage of students.
You can't just take the Amherst's assessment and times it by seventy-nine or, it doesn't work that way. So it's only, um, I have to put in this, so I, I have to put in the exact number for the eight twelve reduction and I could tell you what piece of it is. Hold on one second. Eight twelve, one twenty-six. So. We're o, over minimum local contributions by nine point nine million. And when you take that, that number is then used, um, it's multiplied by those enrollment percentages and it's separated out by town. And that number is added to the local minimum contribution and then the net, um, capital costs that are separated out and the net transportation cost to figure out the total assessment for Amherst. So this is that backend sheet that was requested to be shared at the last four towns meeting. So I could certainly send it back over to you.
So essentially it's like nine million is what we're splitting up by these percentages then?
Right, correct.
Uh, Irv?
Again, I, I believe that the option two is a better option, so I wouldn't be voting for option one. I also wish to remind you, uh, of what has already occurred with, with us in Amherst and take it as a cautionary note. Secondly, I believe, and Tillman, you can correct me if my, if I'm wrong, that Leverett would have some hesitation with option one.
Do you, go ahead.
Yeah, so la, when we had the original budget discussion, I voted for the two options that we considered, which are basically one and two in terms of total amount of funding. Since this is now a significant increase for Leverett, I cannot vote for option one. And as I said previously, I will only support option two.
Uh, Dr. Z?
Hi, everyone. And I know we have a motion on the floor and I just would like us to remind that we're talking about the impact to educating children. And so for me at this point, I just would like to, to ask if, as we go continually through the cycle and the conversation, if we're going to move through it, just, just think about the impact to educating the students. And as we have the motion, I think, can we, can we just make sure we focus in on the impact of the motion, not so much as to the impact to the towns? Because we've already had the discussion. That's not our role in this process. Our pros, our role in this process is the impact to educating the children and what that's gonna look like in terms of what we pass. So let's pass the, the least impactful to the students, please.
Uh, Bridgette?
I just wanted to, um, say that I've been tracking, as part of talking at the state hearing, they asked me to speak in relation to what was going on in other towns, especially rural towns in west of Worcester. So I've just been tracking what the budgets look like and the number of towns that are between eight and fifteen percent on this year's budgets, west of Worcester alone is already fifteen. So it's very common this year, unfortunately, with all the increases that we're seeing in the fixed costs that Deb was talking about, transportation, utilities, all the things that we can't change, that folks are realizing that we really have to go in more. So those are the reasons I'm voting for option one.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, excellent. Uh, Sarah?
I'm sorry, we're voting?
We are voting.
Little side comment. Aye.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Tillman?
No.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Uh, Anna?
Yes.
Irv?
No.
And Sarah Bass? Yes. Okay, we have a budget. Nine, uh, seven yeses, two no's and zero abstentions. Jennifer?
I move we adjourn.
I second.
Was it, would you?
I don't know.
William.
Sarah?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Sarah Bass, yes. Anna?
Yes.
And Irv?
Yeah.
And we are adjourned.